Regular meeting of the Town in Monroe Planning and Zoning Convention. I am Michael O'Reilly. It's Chairman. Please stand and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physicality of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start by calling the roll, starting on my right.
I'm next, Michaelino, alternate.
Brian Cotten, Commissioner.
Leanne Broswell, Commissioner.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate Commissioner.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Okay, that's everyone. This is the time for general public participation. If there are any members of the public here tonight that have anything to report, any questions of the Commission, on anything that's not before the Commission, is to be the time to do that. Please, if there is anyone here in person or online, please raise your hands for general public participation. Yes, go ahead.
Chair, it's Chris Russo. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I'm representing the applicant for the application that's number three on your public hearing agenda, four and 7180 Main Street. We're intending to request a continuance to your February 16th hearing while we respond to the comments that we had discussed at the last hearing. And I know, I think Rick was going to have a couple of comments that he was going to relay to you, but in case somebody was waiting for that application, we're not intending to present tonight. We're asking for a continuance to February 16th.
Hey, thank you, Attorney Russo. It's a good time to say that. So we just have two public hearings tonight. Thank you. Anyone else that has any comments during general public participation time? You have a question? Yes, go ahead.
I'm Scott Murphy. I live on Applegate. I don't know, are we going to talk, still to talk about the 125 Gardner Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
We are. So we'll let you know when it's.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Oh, and with that, let's go to the first public hearing. This is EFP excavation and fill permit 2022-03, file number 110, 125 Gardner Road. This is continued from January the 19th, 2023. And Rick, I think you have something to exhibit.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We received the letter of extension, number seven, and exhibit number eight, response to engineering comments from solely engineering. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick. And for the applicant, we have.
Evening, Commission members. My name is Chris Brodsky. I'm the engineer of solely engineering. Office is located here in Monroe at 501 Main Street. Rick, would you mind sharing my screen, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So we're here to talk about 125 Gardner Road, seeking an excavation and fill permit. We've been before here before. Tonight, we are going to discuss briefly the changes, and then we're going to request a continuance to the next hearing. We are finalizing well and to help it be done next week with them. So in two weeks, we will pick that up. Continue all. So as mentioned before, the site is located on 25 and going down Pepper to 1st to Gardner Road. So we proceed down Gardner Road. Site's located slightly a mile or two down Carter. You're heading towards the north. So here is a picture, scenario, believe, of 2020 of the site. You can see the wetland line back here. This is the limited disturbance of the previous property owner. Our client took ownership of the property not more than a year ago.
I'd like to record, sure, that Commissioner Mayne has joined us.
Final here. Thank you. So last time we were here, there were concerns regarding the amount of blasting, the duration of the blasting, how much material was getting removed from here. We listened to all those concerns. We have raised the site elevation four feet across the entire parcel, so everything has actually got lifted up, if you will. That cut down on about 27,000 cubic yards of material. So we went from 110,000 cubic yard export to about 81,700, I think is the exact number on the plans there. In discussion with our client, we are also here to only seek a two-year permit. We're going to be done with this in two years. So we're no longer seeking five years. So we reduced the duration of the permit and blasting and crushing associated with it, as well as the amount of material that is going to be removed from the property. So what does that look like essentially? Again, if you remember, we were about 422 to 426. Now we're at 430, 428, now 426 is in the lower portion as you head now toward the pond here along the wetlands. And by doing that, again, we reduced almost a third of the export material that we'll be hauling out of the site. And we really didn't change anything in terms of the design overall, like the drainage areas and the flat pad that we're trying to create are essentially the same. Everything just kind of went up, if you will, in elevation. So by going up, we don't have to blast down as far. So that's what resulted in the decrease of material being exported from the site. And the variation of the crushing and blasting and everything, that also reduced as a result. So again, here, these are 2.21, which I've rated a drainage plan. You come into the site over here. It's roughly going to be at a one and a half percent slope leading down to our water quality basin. Firm here, here, protected wetlands. We'll be maintaining a lot of the existing vegetation between the wetlands and our limited disturbance. The water will outlet from the pond to the level spreader to our water quality basin. That's pretty much the changes of our site. Wetlands had some comments regarding some trees that were impacted up on the site here over the years, and we are investigating that. And we'll have a report for them and some solutions to the problems for that for their hearing next week. At this point, that's pretty much the update. As I mentioned before, we'd like to continue. Two weeks, I'd also like to hear any questions or comments regarding the revised material, if you will.
All right. Thank you, Chris. So you'll do it in two years. That's kind of like, boy, you were going to get anyway. So we'll start on my right with questions from the Commissioners. Would you like to go?
Yeah.
All right, go right ahead. Just come up and name an address.
I'm Murphy. I live on Applegate. And we've been here 30 years. It's great. So anyway, one of the things I want to make sure everyone remembers is that everybody that's on Garter and on Applegate, I got a bet, has a septic. So you don't need, you have to not only worry about our foundations, one of all of them, and the wells on Garter. You got to worry about our septic. I know my septic has been good for 30 years. We have it pumped every, you know, two years. So if something goes wrong in the next whatever years, you know, I even think I know who I turn to. That's one thing. And I would like a seismic graph on my property. I think that was offered by us. Now, the other, just one, I doubt I'm going to stop this thing, but we really want an entrance to a building. I think you're proposing on a scenic road with Garter in. You've got to remember that people walk on that. My wife does. I do. And it's, you know, it's partially paved and partially not. Now, where you are, the building's going to be, it isn't. So you're going to put a business on there. So you're going to widen the road. You're going to pave it. Is it still going to be scenic? Just questions. And the other thing is that I know that if you do put a building there, you're going to get more traffic. Well, I'll tell you something. If you live on Applegate and you come down right at the bottom of our street, there's a curve in Garter. And over the years, if you're, like, if you're coming from Van Hill and going towards Applegate, towards, well, towards Pepper inside, and you come to the curve, if you don't stop and look, if you want to make the left into Applegate, you get nailed. If you come in the other way, you, you know, you might even get run into by someone going too fast that's going the other way. We haven't had accidents there, but I'm just saying, if there's more traffic, look at. That should be fixed. And then the only other thing I have to say is that, my wife, we smell the diesel, you know, smell all the way up in the air. You hear the shots from the hunters. We hear other things, things like that. So I'm sure we're going to hear the crushing. So if we want to minimize the number of years for sure, if it's going to happen. And finally, you know, this is Grasso. The runners of the Pepper Street project. That was over slightly taken longer. So do we trust their estimate of three years? If that's, that's just put it out there. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
You want to, if I may respond? Yes, thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. Some things to touch on. A lot of the blasting that will be taking place in the site is located in this vicinity. This is to the north, Applegate is to the south. At this one point, I'd like to admit that a lot of the blasting, again, is further away from Applegate, if you will. I know that this is the closest corner of the property to Applegate. I would just like to start there. One thing that I didn't mention in the presentation is we went out there and took a look at the ISP. So the site is just pulling on the driveway, and we will be cleaning up this portion of the road. In regards to the comments regarding the building and everything else, at this point in time, we're just seeking excavation and fill permit. Anything beyond that, we'll have to come back for all of you. And there will have to be detailed design regarding any improvements to the roads and things of that nature. At this, you know, at this time, again, we are seeking a two-year permit. Once that permit expires, no other can do work on the project. So it's not, unless we request extensions. So that's not something that can drag on for years and years. Again, we only are here trying to make our best effort to reduce the scope of the project and try to get it done as quickly as we can. As I mentioned in the last hearing, the site is pretty rough out there right now. We just need to clean it up, level it out, to get it presentable to eventually turn it into something profitable and something powerful and talented for the property. So we want to show one looking. Do you have, this is the pre-blast survey map that we did prepare. And as you can see, the majority of the properties on Applegate are included in that pre-blast survey radius, which will have the site and graph, as mentioned, on the property. Just wanted to point it out. I'm not quite sure on the exact locations. I'm just determined by the fire marshal and the blasting company, if you will, but this is the pre-blast survey radius. So there's special requirements that must take place in terms of prerequisites, if you will, to the blasting process.
Mike, you're going to put, so you don't know how many seismic graphs you've got to put out there?
Again, it depends on, you know, how their blast sizes and everything. The blaster works in hand with the fire marshal. This radius, there's special prerequisites that have to take place for the homes and other properties that are located within here.
This gentleman's concerned about seismic graph. I'm sure all the other names are probably going to be concerned about one, too.
Yeah, and I don't see any reason why we work with the homeowners to have them as needed. Thank you.
Okay. Now, to the Commissioners.
As far as the blasting, will it be sporadic? Or do you know, you have an estimate on how much actual blasting you'll have to do?
It's not going to be sporadic, per se. It's going to be on a schedule. All the homeowners in that blast radius are going to get calls like that will tell them the date, the time. It won't be just by surprise, per se, if you will. You know, they try to keep to a schedule. It might be once every two weeks. It might be once a week. I'm not sure. Until the blasters on-site evaluate the site and really determines that schedule, it's hard to tell. It shouldn't be like random. Everyone should be notified of the blast at that time. And we're going to try to do the blasting progressively. It's not going to be once and then like a six-month wait. You know, we're going to try to do as much as we can, move the rock out of the way and keep going, if you're saying.
But it could be that you do it in the beginning and then the midline, towards the end of the two years, you might have to blast again.
So we're going to essentially start like probably right here because there's not too much to give blast and then work our way across the property. So we will blast a zone. I don't know the exact dimensions, but let's just say it's 50 by 50. We will blast that zone. The rock will be cleared. And when that stone rock is being cleared, we'll be drilling the next 50 by 50 zone. Again, those dimensions are not exactly the same theoretically. And that rock will be blasted and cleared. The next zone will be, it's a measured and calculated effort, I think.
And as far as the crushing, is there a schedule of hours of operation for?
Yes, it's sheet two points one. It's off my screen right now. But there's detailed information as well as the blasting plan, hours of when you can blast, hours of when you can crush, the typical hours of operation of the sites, I believe, like. So site operations are between the hours eight and five daily. All blasting is deducted Monday through Friday, nine to three. And truck traffic is limited between nine and 4:00 p.m. daily. So there's protocols at face. So crushing again is nine to four as well. So there's specific times that are allowed to do things. No one since the morning is allowed to start crushing or blasting or any creative of that nature. It's all listed right on there.
And as far as the dump trucks coming in and out, are they normally instructed to try to stick to Route 25?
Yeah, most trucks should be making a right out of the driveway heading south and then getting off Pepper Street and 25 from there.
Because with the other quarry, we were seeing these dump trucks cutting through Monroe. And they're very loud and speeding and.
I understand your concern. We can work with our client. He's going to be operating the site, if you will, and we'll try to look at that as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know this is just the excavation and fill permit, but with it being on a scenic road in the future, any development there would more than likely have to have a pretty robust screening in the front. You know, and it's not like the business would benefit from roadside view because no one's driving on that road. So just so everybody's aware, we'll make sure that that's probably nicely planted.
Yeah, that's a great point. For this excavation and fill permit, we're keeping that 50-foot landscape buffer that's required. So we're not asking for a waiver or anything from that requirement. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Bros, will you plan on putting a crusher?
It's tucked away far, as far as we can from this. This location right here, the box.
At the lowest part of the property though, right?
On average, it climbs significantly in this general area. I wouldn't say it's the lowest, and I wouldn't say it's the highest.
We wouldn't have a problem putting it in the lowest part of the property, would you?
No, if you want us to put it in the lowest, we'd be happy to. But we have the rules. We have to be certain distances from residential districts. So that's why we chose this spot. But if you're, if you want us to put it in the lower spot.
I want to dissipate the noise as much as I can.
No, I totally understand your concerns.
The other question I have, do you have, you have a problem with us putting the timeline on when you can crush and when you can't crush?
A timeline in terms of like hours of the day?
Hours, yeah.
I mean, I guess it would depend on those powers, if that makes any sense. But like I said, we, the site's open from eight to five. We're already restricting an hour at the beginning of the day and the hour at the end of the day to crush. We're restricting blasting, two hours at the beginning of the day, two hours at the end of the day. So we're already inching in on the final hour, if you will. But I guess the answer is it would depend on the hours they are looking for.
Well, we have, well, I mean, I have concern about the hours of crushing.
Understood.
I mean, that's something that we have to approve to do. And we don't have to approve the crushing on our site.
Definitely.
I'm just asking, is your client willing to work with, we go into deliberations with hours that we think is fit to run a crusher?
Client is here to work with all of you. So that means limiting the hours of crushing. That's something that, you know, we would prefer. It isn't limited too much, but we're here to get this permit and here to work with all of you. So that's something that the Commission wishes. We would have to abide by that, so.
The other question, what's going on with wetlands? What's wrong with, I had to go back to them?
We're not going back to them. There's supposed to be a meeting on January 25th that canceled. So that funded us to February 9th. You're hoping to have that completed on January 25th, come before you tonight and be finalized, but we have to continue.
So all your wetlands approval is not finalized yet?
Yeah, wetlands approval is not finalized, no.
So you don't know, you think you're going to change any of the conditions? You don't know that?
To be honest, this site doesn't work around. It's like 0.5 or 0.6 acres of public review area that's being disturbed. We're maintaining a lot of the buffer that's really back here. So I don't anticipate any major changes to the wetlands, but again, we are keeping the hearing open, so the 16th, we can change it if necessary.
Okay. That's all I have to ask.
Commissioner Mayne.
Actually, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's a good thing.
Well, my main concern is overexcavation on the site. How does, how does the applicant plan on providing accountability regarding elevations along the way?
So we're happy to provide drone surveys periodically as requested by the committee. So we're doing the monthly reports right off the bat. That's the standard given condition, the approval we have written in our plan set. On top of that, we'd be happy to offer periodic drone surveys, which would bring and present to the Commission. Say, hey, you've been at it for three months. Here's the elevations that we're at. This is what, this is what was approved and we're here. We'd be happy to do something like that for you. And that way, you know, it's real-time data that you guys are getting updates on so you can see and know and feel comfortable that it's progressing as intended.
Just speaking of Mr. Murphy's concerns on a septic, have you have any experience with the septic systems being, you know, affected by blasting in the past?
Hi, evening, I'm Commissioner Dr. Kevin Solman. Yeah, no, I mean, blasting, septic systems, you know, the efficacy of septic systems is all about how, you know, the F1 infiltrates into the ground. You know, blasting activities, and there's been quite a bit in town over the years. A lot have had septic systems in very close proximity. I haven't been aware of any impact from a blasting standpoint to septic systems because it doesn't, you know, it doesn't change how a septic system functions. It doesn't, you know, obviously concerns with wells and things like that if there's some sort of crack or something in bedrock. But septic systems have to be a certain separation from bedrock, right, you know, in order for it to work and is naturally receiving stuff. So I haven't, in my experience, haven't heard any evidence or anything having to do with this type of earth removal having any impact to a septic system.
I haven't either. I just wanted to clarify that. It's a valid concern.
Yeah.
I can't think of any way that that could affect the septic system outside of breaking a pipe on the way out to it.
Exactly.
I think there's bigger, bigger concerns in the septic, which could be handled with the, with the testing that happens beforehand and after, if there is any problems with foundations or.
Exactly. And that's one of the things I always encourage, you know, anybody that's near one of these activities. As part of this process, there's a pre-blast survey. And, you know, all too often, I've seen residents, you know, refuse that and deny that. And that's, that pre-blast survey is, and that pre-blast inspection is a means to protect the, any of butters or any neighbors who may be affected. It creates an opportunity to document what the condition of the foundation is and inside the building and things like that. So that it's, if there's an alleged complaint later on, there's documentation on, hey, this was, this looked like this before. Now it looks like this. There's clearly an impact. Well, what happens is if people refuse that, which I've seen, you know, they can make a claim, but if they didn't allow that inspection to be documented, then they have no rights to really say, this is the fault of this, right? You know, I will say that a lot of other, you know, projects that I've been involved in that have had blasting, you know, if there is an issue, you know, there's, there's, there's a, there's a process on how that gets claimed, you know, even if it's, you know, even if it's not necessarily, you know, established as the fault of that activity. In most instances, I've seen, you know, you know, certainly our clients go to fix an issue anyways, even if it hasn't been documented. So I think in this instance, this applicant has the same intent. This isn't something that they want to come in and put it into havoc and make a bunch of, you know, really unhappy neighbors. They're simply trying to create a piece of property that's owned industrial and do some, you know, some, you know, earth removal to allow for it to be developed, you know, based on how the zoning rights and the POCD want it to be.
Okay, is there any, any chance of tightening up the timeline even further than two years?
I think, you know, I think part of the revisions that Chris reviewed is, you know, reducing, you know, raising that grade, reducing the amount of materials. You know, I think it certainly reduced the overall length. I mean, I still think, you know, I mean, 24 months is a pretty, it happens fast, you know. It comes at you quick. And I think a lot of, a lot of the stuff that we've offered in terms of monthly reports and then, you know, other periodic reports of the Commission, I think the Commission should have some comfort that they're going to be able to see the progress and understand where they are. You know, so I think further restricting that schedule is just, it just kind of keeps, even if we're going to take the months, we have to come back and ask again or something like that. I think that's, I think the measures that are certainly up for the Commission to, that they're going to have a very close eye on this, make sure that, you know, another issue wouldn't happen.
There's been other, other sites and other plans that have come in front of prior Commissions with monthly reporting that have been overexcavated in the past. That's why we're talking about this. And they seemed very close to this, this application that's in front of us. That's why we're, you know, we don't really see an end game as far as what, what you guys are looking to do long-term. So that's where some of the concerns are coming from.
Yeah, and I think, I think, as this Commissioner knows, I've been involved in some of those. I've been providing some of those reports. And I think, I think the one, the one thing that we should all take comfort on is that's happened and that's reared its ugly head. And I think everybody's learned a lot from that. You know, not only this, this Commission is certainly way more worse than the Commission at the time, but also staff and everybody else. I mean, there's clearly a lot of, you know, angst and concern and all that stuff regarding these things. But he's not, you know, I'll say that there's another, you know, there's another project in town that's currently going through some excavation activities on Main Street. You know, that has monthly reporting requirements, and there's no issues with this because everyone's very focused on making sure that this object is excavated and stuff like that. So I think that, you know, we can give some comfort that everybody's very attuned to this now and making sure that we don't, you know.
A lot of security visibility as well. You know, if you could see the site, you're driving along Main Street. A lot of security visibility as well, you know, if you could see the site, you're driving along Main Street, nobody can see it, you know? That's, that's one of the problems. This is a little bit kind of in between. So that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Uh, Sue, um, I know with the, we were bringing up the finished grade by four feet. What's the new actual finished grade?
Uh, I mean, it's, well, it has a slope across the site, just provides some drainage, some basins. This contour that you see here is 430.
Okay.
And then 428, so the two come towards the 4.6. Down about 100% slope, which is about as flat as we can go.
Um, and
I have a question.
Mr. Murphy, is your house in that pre-blasted zone or that notification zone that they show?
Yeah, it's, uh, the, uh, I'd be wary, I have COVID here.
Okay.
But, um, the, the magnitude
I can come up.
Of Apple Tate and the, the, the location. This one? Yeah. Yeah, so you're, you're
Okay. Those are the only questions. Thank you.
Like that.
Can I ask, if, if this project is, is having an entrance fund guide are the only option?
Yes, it is unfortunately. We're surrounded on three sides by, um, state land and the aquariums like over there too as well. But, and then there's Towne Monroe open space, so unfortunately our only way out, we're trying to get traffic.
Commissioner Mayne, you had another question.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Um, are you guys, you guys decide to do away with the scale like?
Yes, completely gone.
That's brilliant. Um, what kind of equipment is gonna be on this site? And how much?
So the equipment list is right here. So we have two large excavators, one track. Those are, uh, three price dump trucks, one jaw crusher, and small excavator, two loaders, two rollers, and one stack. It's typical, this is the same equipment that we have used on other excavation projects that have been approved in town. It's actually less. It seems like a lot, but
It is a lot. It doesn't seem like a lot. It is a lot. So here's my fear. You're they're obviously gonna sell the, the material coming off the property, correct?
No, our client tends to use it on his own projects.
So where's he, so he's gonna haul it from here to where?
The various job sites, potentially Pepper Street and wherever, where we have
Oh, he's gonna stockpile it on this property until he needs it?
No, he's going to remove it as soon as it's blasted.
So as soon as it's, right, so he's gotta bring it somewhere.
Correct. He's, uh, it's our, our client is a site work contractor.
I understand what your client does, but I'm just saying you got him, so he's gotta move it right away.
I mean, there'll be some stockpiles, but it's not going to be 50 stockpiles, like, there's not gonna be a vast amount.
So as he's blasting, he has a home for all this stuff? Basically what you're saying.
There's going to be some material stocked out, but there won't be in
How much do you think is gonna be stocked out?
I, I mean, I think, I think with all excavation applications, you know, the, 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 the material that's proposed in their time lines of, that's great, that's being requested. So, I mean, from an activity standpoint, they're gonna be, you know, removing material, processing, and then taking it off the property. You know, I can't guarantee it's gonna go the day that it's, it's crushed. I mean, you know, things have been flowed, but, but from a, you know, there may, there's gonna be a lot more, you know, export from a seasonal standpoint, right? If, if, if it's the winter, you know, you're not gonna necessarily have a home for it on February 4th, but you could have a home for all of it plus some on March 15th.
So you are stockpiled, you're gonna stockpile something on there?
Well, well, no, in the, during the duration of a permit to excavate material, there's, 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 there's no precedent in town, or anywhere for that matter, that I think talks about, it says, you have so much time to complete this application, this, what the, the scope of work proposed as part of the application. You know, there's, there's no other, I don't think it's the, the, how to phrase this the correct way, you know?
Think about it for a second there, buddy.
I will. When, when a project is approved, either build a building or do an excavation or do a, you know, the, the means and methods of how that work is, is completed is something that the applicant has to work through. That's something that's typically regulated by a planning and zoning commission.
But it will be done in two years.
Yes, exactly.
It'll look like these plans in two years.
Exactly.
There will not be any stockpiles at the end of two years.
No, no.
Nope. So, sure, great. Um, they're still gonna move material from here to Pepper Street, correct?
Not necessarily. Can't, can't confirm exactly how that's gonna go, cause I, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't forecast that.
And they have no other, they have no other companies coming here to pick up material or, or any of that kind of stuff? I find that to be impressive.
Their company consists of 100-plus employees. They do multimillion-dollar site work jobs. They did, they pay the accountant partway in New York. I mean, we're talking, this is not your typical one-to-two man show. Our client runs a very professional, very large organization. They have many jobs. I mean, they have many different locations at once.
They have vertical arguments, priorities. They have projects where they're rebuilding roads all throughout Purple County, New York, Goodavon County. Work. This isn't, this isn't a Joe Schmo, you know, Ricky Gink, um, homeowner requesting, uh, approval for something that may or may not be done in a time of man. This is, you know, and I could understand a concern, this was, you know, if a random property owner requested this and yet concerns about these, I could certainly have some of these questions, but, you know, fortunately with this application, you have somebody who actually has a, uh, a, a means to utilize the material that's being excavated and exported from.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Mayne, you have a question?
Yeah. Do you have a well on this property?
No, there's no well.
How you planning on, on dust for trucks?
Um, there will be some D water, potentially located in some trash or basins, which can drill a well as well. There's different ways to, it's gonna be a water truck on site as well.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can, we can install a well for, for purposes of dust.
You're gonna have to do something with the crusher. You're gonna have to run water and crush. You're gonna have to
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll drill a well for that.
One other point earlier, our client instructed us that we will work with you on the hours of crushing. I know you mentioned it earlier.
Yeah, and so, um, yeah, well, that's, that's all I have to know. I, I'm just concerned about, you know, the hours of crushing, blasting, you know, and, uh, in some way to water that property. And I don't think the water truck is basically the answer for that.
No, we'll, 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 we'll drill a well and then that'll, that'll use the total weight of the, of the dust.
Are there, are there, are the right vendors suggested, uh, crushing times that you'd like?
Well, first of all, I, well, what, what hours do you think you're gonna crush? I mean, you said eight to five, and what do you think you're gonna do, eight to five, and you're gonna do Saturdays? What are you doing?
The eight to five is the hours of operation on the site. The crushing is on the 9th. So there's an hour taken off
Monday to Friday. Monday to Friday.
Monday to Friday. Um, it's implicit on the and these are from your regular.
I'm just asking, is, I mean, that's something that I think I may want to consider that, you know?
You, you can certainly, I think their restriction to the, blasting restrictions from nine to three is certainly reasonable.
That's all I have for now. I guess you can come back, but I think that's all I have for right now. I'm, I'm concerned about the, the well, so if you, should you put the well?
All right. Well, I'm happy to see that you've changed the elevation as well. I just knew there was a long way to go with that. So if there aren't any other questions, then, um, we'll continue this until our next meeting. Thank you.
Phenomenal.
And then we will move right on to our second. This is SEP 2022-08, file 1648A, 467 and 45 Pepper Street. Are there any new exhibits? The continuation from 11923.
Good evening, commission members. At record, my name is Chris Walowski, civil engineer and soil engineer. I'm also looking to hear from you about, uh, Main Street. Uh, we're here to present 467 and 45 Pepper Street. We are seeking a special exception permit. Uh, we have received Wetlands approval, um, so we are hoping to, uh, have, finding some, some, of the project.
Mr. Chairman, no, no exhibits.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so if you travel north on 25th and you come down the northern Pepper Street, uh, approximately a mile in is 467, 485. Here's a closer zoom in now. And then finally, this area is updated, um, but this shows the property about 2000. So on the screen right now is the site plan. Last time I went before you, there were some concerns regarding the screener. Um, we have moved the screener inside of the building. There will operate, there will be two screener inside of the building, no screener outside. Also, as previously designed, there will be no, uh, crushing on outside. It will all take place inside of the proposed building. Um, there were also some, uh, concerns regarding the amount of equipment on the site. We have cut down the equipment significantly. We have also listed, uh, it's a little hard to read, but for example, the crushers and everything will be for inside manufacturing. This is listed on sheet 2.21, so there's a street sweeper, uh, but again, the number of trucks, the number of excavators, all chopped and chopped in. So equipment is down, the list of the equipment, the, uh, screeners are inside. Those are really the big site plan changes. Uh, there were some concerns regarding, um, the material and the other stuff, uh, that we're gonna be putting in and manufacturing on the site. Where here before you received the same approval that was previously granted in 45 Pepper Street in 2018. And that is for ATEK materials. Our client has also offered, there was some concern about how the material comes from. On a quarterly basis, we will provide, um, reports on where the imported material came from to you all throughout the project duration. So those are some major concessions and items that we are trying to work with you all on, that we're hoping can move this project forward. Thank you.
Just to, just Kevin Solman, I had a couple of things. So obviously, so I, I, I've missed some of the last hearings. I've been, um, had conflicts, but I've been able to listen to a lot of the record. And I certainly understand a lot of the, you know, comments and concerns raised throughout the, the duration of the hearings. You know, and as we, as we kind of reviewed the last discussion points, you know, I kind of went back and looked at the previous approval and I said, you know, in order to really kind of satisfy the commission, I think we need to really revert back to what was previously approved of 45 Pepper Street. So we, we did that. We, we removed any, um, exterior activities, removed the screener, we reverted back to, um, what the equipment list was previously approved on 45 Pepper Street. And, and, and we actually provided a copy of that previous approval to the commission and kind of highlighted one of those, one of those conditions. You know, um, and I'll just, maybe because I have it up, you know, site manufacturing use is limited to the processing materials in the warehouse doors thereof, then the structures and buildings and stuff, this is, you know, the site plan. Site plans, operation may be conducted within normal business hours. The premises shall not be used as a contractor's office dispatch home. None of the, the contractors use. So that's, that's a condition that was straight from the previous approval on 45 Pepper Street. You know, as, as, as this commission knows, that's, and he's heard the, the presentations from, from, from Chris and, and I know the applicant had kind of come to some meetings too, you know? The, the only real change that's happened from, from before to now is the addition of 467 Pepper Street. And I think that actually allowed the overall intensity to come down a little bit, you know, from a percentage standpoint. You know, we've, we've kind of reduced some of those, um, you know, overall areas and impacts. So other than that, I think we're trying to still maintain the rights that were kind of previously granted to the applicant in a way that could also um, as Chris mentioned, you know, the, the applicant has agreed to provide periodic, whether they're quarterly or other periodic reports to the commission that will actually include, you know, uh, uh, reports on, um, manifests for where any and all material that's come to the property has come from. I know there's concerns about that, so the applicant's agreed to, to, to agree to that. And the commission so want, wanted to include that as a condition of approval. You know, but we're here to continue the dialogues and we're hoping, hoping there are any other comments or concerns from the commission.
All right, well, then let's, uh, see if we, as the commission have any questions. We'll start likewise.
Yeah, um, do you know of any other facility that's comparable to this, indoor crusher in the area?
So it's not in our area, but there's an FNF materials. It's in central upstate Connecticut, and actually they operate entirely outside.
Is it crumple?
It's, I don't have the exact, right, somewhere Rocky Hill, but their operation is outside and it's very similar to what proposing. So actually the one before you is much more restrictive.
Right, well, I'm just wondering if, you know, something that's compared to indoor crushing. I'm just wondering if the building is actually gonna dampen the sound enough, do you know what I mean?
Uh, if
Really have something to go on, you know, cause you said it was just basically a a metal-framed aluminum-sided building. Not sure that's gonna actually dampen the sound.
Well, the, you know, the, the, the Towne Monroe has noise ordinance and has noise requirements. The applicant's gonna have to comply with those. This was something that was reviewed as part of the, the last application, you know, there was a lot of concern about that. And I think that was kind of handled through conditions that the applicant's gonna have to maintain, you know, those, those, those regulations and keep those regulations. So I think that, and I think we've, I'm not sure if you were on the commission, but a lot of members have probably been on, um, been a part of presentations where, or applications where there was a lot of discussion about the noise ordinance that exists in town. And it exists in the industrial zones, and it's actually far more restrictive from a requirement standpoint, even the state of Connecticut DDP requirements. So I think Monroe's ordinance in itself has some pretty, uh, strict requirements that are being confined with in order for any operation to, to operate.
So there's a specific decibel level that has to?
Yeah, actually the, the regulations actually have, um, they have, uh, yes, not only decimal requirements, but also octave bands, um, which is the different frequencies that noise is generated. So all of those requirements apply to all projects in town and this, this project perhaps it comply with those as well.
Uh, one more thing, the building actually is insulated for sound. It's not just a steel building. It's actually insulated as, as part of the construction. I apologize if I mentioned that before.
Thank you. No questions?
Now, you, you refer back to the old application. The building has increased in size from the old application.
It, it has, considering that the, that we added the additional parcel, 467, it allowed them to do a larger building, which really allows to ensure that all those operations can take place within the building.
Right, and the storage capacity has increased from last application.
Yes.
So basically it's a totally different application. I understand, well, you're coming from what we approved last time, but I'm saying it's totally a different application. I mean, you, you increased the storage, you increased the size of the building. And so my prob, I have, the issue I have is just, I need to know about where the material's coming from, manifest. And, uh, the other question I have to ask, is there brown water monitoring wells on this property?
Uh, I don't know if there are, or those are typically, those are typically installed if there was a site with environmental.
Well, no, I'm saying, no, it's, it's close to the Quonic River. And you gotta bring in asphalt, like you said that you, going off the old application. So did Wetlands have any concern about that? Had no concern about runoff?
No, there was, there is no concern. There's a significant, we call it treatment train here for all the runoff and everything. There's high dynamic separators or water quality units. There's oil grease separators in the site. There's multiple deep subcatch basins. We have, uh, our stormwater pond essentially is two ponds in itself. We have a sediment four bay, which is an additional line of protection. We have a sediment four bay, which is an additional line of protection for the stormwater runoff before it gets to the larger pond. So we're seeing that right here. We also have level spreaders. There's six, seven, eight different various stormwater treatment measures that we use on the site. So wetlands did not have a concern regarding that. As I mentioned before, they voted to approve the project. Thank you.
So you wouldn't, so you wouldn't be putting any kind of monitoring wells in there?
Well, there's no, you know, monitoring wells get installed when there's, you know, everyone's sudden environmental area of concern or otherwise known contaminated. You know, we're not.
Well, no.
We're not proposing any, you know, underground fuel tanks or anything.
No, but you're bringing in asphalt. That's coming off the road. And concrete. And concrete.
Yes.
Coming off the road. And we don't know how old those roads are that they're coming from. Because basically, Mr. Grasso, he digs up the road, he's going to make a new base out of it. We don't know how, you know, those roads been, the PCPs and, you know. Yeah, they could be 30, 40, 50 years old. 60 years old. And so we don't know what's in the asphalt. So you're going to crush it through there and you're going to run it through there. And then that's going to, the rainwater is going to take that there. You don't think there's going to be any contaminants in there?
No, because, no, we don't see any, you know. We don't, we don't see any real cause for concern for any kind of contamination or impacts, you know, ecological impact or anything like that. I mean, this, this, this type of thing is making, you know, like similar to, similar to Pepper Street, right? So there was a road there before. It was ripped up and it was, a new road was constructed. When they, when they rebuild that road, they process that, you know, asphalt and then they create new road base for it. And then that road base gets installed and it gets capped with new pavement. I mean, those are, that's the, that's the optimal use for this type of material. And I think the DDP is kind of, you know, reinforced that a little bit. You know, we're not, we're not looking to come in, create, you know, massive stockpiles of asphalt and leave them there for long periods of time. That's not the, the purpose or intent of the, the application or the operation.
No, I mean, but, you know, my concern is just that, you know, it was a broad thing, like, you know, you would bring concrete in. And who knows if it's clean fill or not clean fill, but I asked Chris if it, you know, rebar in, he doesn't know if it's rebar, he says it's coming out of sidewalk, sidewalk could have rebar in, then that doesn't turn out to be clean fill.
We don't, we don't intend to, or will not accept any concrete with any rebar or other deal with materials. It's not, you know, we're not looking to run a recycling operation. We know that's not something that's permitted, nor is it something that we're interested in getting involved.
But you, you plan on taking in stuff from other contractors?
So if I may, the large projects, like those road projects that you're mentioning that are 40, 50 years old, there is testing done on these projects and our client is not accepting materials that are, that may be contaminated. Those have to go to special facilities. So when, if somebody's tearing up a road that's 40 or 50 years old that's contaminated, it won't be allowed, and our client has no interest in taking that material.
And I understand that, and I, and I have that, and I understand that that's his intent. But there's been case studies done that where contaminated stuff was brought into places that it wasn't supposed to be brought into. I mean, it happened in Massachusetts, it happened all over the place. That's why I'm concerned about having manifests.
But those were, and, and I think the, the, the applicant has, has agreed to provide that to the, to the commission throughout the life of the operation.
Anything that he brings in, he'll have a manifest for?
Well, yeah.
Any other contractor that comes in here, he'll have a manifest for?
He'll, he'll provide.
And he'll make up his own manifest where he got the material from?
Yes, where material comes from.
And then when will we get that, quarterly or monthly or?
That's up with the commission, like quarterly reports. I think that's a reasonable request or condition to, to apply to the, the operation.
Okay, I don't have any set of plans.
We didn't, I think we only revised the site plan and then provided a copy of, you know, the, the previous approval with our color letter. So there weren't any other, you know, the only thing that really changed was some of the equipment lists and some of the other conditions that the, the removal of the screens. That was on the second.
So we're going to put that all in conditions?
Did you, I remember the blasting plan too?
That was for.
That was for the other plan. This is for, this is for.
I didn't see some, see.
Yeah, those are distributed, so.
Yeah, it's just a site plan.
Yeah, I'll check in with you later, Leon.
Might come good for them.
All right.
Inside the, the building, that's where they're going to crush and all that kind of stuff. How does that, the sediment that gets onto the ground, how does that get cleaned?
So inside of the building, there's dust sprinklers.
Okay.
And then. And then there's floor.
Oh, yeah, but I'm just answering the question, let the boy be.
There's, thank you, there's, there's.
I got you, dude, don't worry. He's just.
There's floor drains in the building, and then we have an oil grit separator right outside. It's located right here. It's my cursor. That's how, I mean, but we don't dissipate much at all. Dust pressure sprinklers are going to keep me a lot of that at bay.
So like, does it get washed and swept up?
Exactly, it gets swept up. It'll be, you know, put back into material, it'll be good base material.
And whatever doesn't gets washed into?
Oil grit separator.
Yeah.
All right. I, I mean, I do have some of the concerns that Leon does also with the, with, with the materials coming in and stuff, but I do like all the, all the fancy schmancy stuff you got going on down there to separate this and that.
I mean, the other thing I will mention is our con, our client does not accept asphalt from outside contractors. Alan Rocker.
Yeah, so the only asphalt that would be brought here.
So here's the problem I have. I keep hearing things like this, right? But the problem is, the monitoring of that stuff is so difficult. It really is. I, I don't doubt that they don't. The problem is, what if they do? How, like, we technically will never know, to be honest with you. That's, on a quarterly report, that material's been there, processed, gone, and we don't see it until three months later. So that's the only issue that, that concerns me about such a big operation like this is, you know, I'm sure Mr. Grasso has friends that are in the same business. I'm sure sometimes people get in binds. I'm sure he wants to help his friends sometime. Like, it's just the way nature of business is, right? I'm sure you have another architect friend or engineer friend that says, hey, Kev, I'm in a bind, I need help, and you're such a nice guy that you're going to go ahead and help him. You know what I mean? It's just the way it is, you know? That's, that's just, that's just the concern I, you know. Mr. Kimball didn't want to dig so deep, but then all of a sudden he just kept digging and next thing you know, he was, you know, halfway to the center of the earth. Stuff happens, and it's sometimes just hard to monitor all that. That's all. Rob?
I'm satisfied with the contaminant containment systems that have been proposed. What type of maintenance, routine maintenance is involved in, in making sure that these are working effectively?
So on our plant set, we have an entire operations and maintenance plan, highlighted here, but there is routine cleanings of all these structures that have to be inspected. They have to be, the oil grit separators have to get pumped out and taken off site. You know, there's, there's a whole plan, if you will, if you want many, many gritty I can, but there's, they involve routine inspections, routine cleanings, and they're on schedules every X months, or it's all, it's not just random. There are random, but in addition, there's a schedule for all the measures.
He has like a street sweeper, right? It's still outside and all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
And, and with the insulation in the building, sound deadening, is it like a spray foam insulation? Or do you have any idea? Application on that?
I, I just know that it's a sound deafening material. I apologize though, at this point.
Okay, um, that's all I have.
If it was a spray foam, it'd probably be better. Gets into the cracks.
It does, I mean, it's spray foam, it should be more effective. I figure if it's sound deadening, it's probably.
One more thing I would just like to quickly point out is, previous town engineer, we worked together and there's a concretely anti-tracking pad apron here. So this has grooves in it. Any of the trucks will kick off the sediment and send that to a sediment four bay. We've got a pavement leak off, so the, those dry riders and scoops send it out on a needed basis, so we don't track anything off Pepper Street. We wanted to make sure of the. Thank you.
I have no questions. So thank you for listening to our previous concerns and how you bring it back to what we were involved with before I was here, but I do appreciate that, so thank you.
All right, so with the, the tubinist concrete, do you process that the same way as regular concrete? It goes through the same machines?
Yeah, generally.
Crushed to the same?
Well, a lot of that will end up getting mixed, a lot of that ends up getting mixed with, you know, some screenings and stuff to kind of create more of a road based product. But yes, it can go through the same, the same machines. And it's, listen, there are other types of applications where they bring in millings and then they throw them through a different machine that would actually make it from the tubing again and heat it up and something like that. That is not what's being proposed here, so it's just we're using that.
So this is where you're taking large chunks of asphalt and breaking them down into what size roughly?
So generally, a lot of the, one of the main products would be like a three inch minus road base. So, you know, there'd be three inches and, and below. And then that's really what kind of, that's, that's, that's the majority of the reinforced base that goes underneath all roads.
Three inch minus.
Three inch minus, yeah. So that'll go, that kind of, that material goes through like, you know, pressure or screener. And then it's, there's certain, you know, percentages that can pass different size sibs, but, but that material itself, it's, it's a really good pour process that once you place and compact, it's structurally sound and it can support the, you know, traffic that runs over it.
All right, let's go to the public, if there are any people here tonight that would.
Other one closes.
Have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand. Any people online that have any comments either for or against or neutral on this project? Please raise your hand. This will be the tie. All right, seeing none. Do we have any other questions from the commission or from the staff? If not, then we'd like to close hearing.
Yes, I'd like to close the hearing. I thank you all for your time and working with us on this application.
Thank you. Hearing is hereby closed. All right. deliberations, terminations. So we can deliberate on this tonight?
Chairman, what's that? What comment and idea number three?
Item number three.
Four and 7180 Main Street. We're continuing that hearing?
Yes. Absolutely. Yes. Yeah, we mentioned that earlier.
Yeah, I, I, staff just wants to advise the commission that referrals were made to the superintendent. Superintendent confirmed to me this week that he contacted Superintendent de Trumbull. They have a plan. They, at this time, want the buses to stop on Route 25. That may change. If that's the case, the curb line has to be recessed then, like you would do for the public metro line.
The superintendent wants the buses to stop on 25?
That, it was his initial feedback to me. I think there's going to be continued discussion on that.
That doesn't sound very.
So can I make a comment on that or do we have to wait until?
Yeah, wait, yeah.
Wait, okay.
I, I'm just doing a quick staff, you know. And if the busing is provided, it was brought up to, to provide painted markings for the students to walk to Route 25. The police department has no comments at this time. It's made. Fire marshal, the fire marshal today spoke with his counterpart in Trumbull. They have conveyed their recommendations to the applicant's engineer. That will be incorporated and you'll hear comments that, that were. But I just wanted to share with you, staff made the referrals to those.
So do we have time on this if we, to deliberate on, at our next meeting? The commissioner and board is even ready? Or how much time do we have?
We got the extension, Chris, for this current one.
For Pepper Street?
We, the commission is asking whether they can hold off on deliberation until Commissioner Leon for the next meeting on the 16th. For Pepper Street, yeah.
I think you guys have time statutorily to.
Oh, yeah.
To close the hearing and then.
Yeah, you, you gave us an extension.
Yeah, we gave an extension.
So, yeah, the way it works, Mr. Chairman, the hearing closes, then you have 65 days.
So.
All right.
So we'll put that on the 16th. We're going to have a loaded agenda on the 16th.
I know, but what, what don't we have?
Make sure Leon gets what he needs before that meeting? Can we make sure Leon gets what's missing?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm going to, I'm going to correct that tomorrow.
What?
I'd want to write up an approval then. Can you write up an approval then with some of the, oh, you have one now?
No, I, a lot has to go into the resolution for this one.
Okay. So we have something to work on?
Yes. Well, I'll prepare a draft. I'll prepare a draft for the 16th.
Fast, yes. Okay, very good, then we'll hold off on deliberations. We have a couple of new applications. The Pondy, who's, looks like they're coming in.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that public hearing is our next meeting, February 16th. And this is the text amendment for the standards for that new zone that we have there. The second part of it is the SCP for the revised development. That will be coming in the first meeting of March. And then we have the 126. That's the old station on, across the street from 127, the R. What's the name of the? Oh, yeah. They withdrew their application for the gas station convenience store. They have now submitted plans with widening 25 across the street. And that will coincide with 127, they're putting in sidewalks. So those are the three new applications we received. Two will be heard at the next meeting.
All right, we have meeting minutes from January the 5th.
I cannot vote, I was not here.
Correct. So for January the 5th, we have Riley and Rosie, Chi, Smirgino, DuPaul. I'll read, I'll read these.
I think she's not here either.
I don't think it's yet to be seen. Majority.
Oh, that's true.
So, Chair, I obtain a motion to adopt January 5th meeting minutes. That's drafted. Motion?
Austin adopt January 5th.
Motion, I have needed motion, I have a sec, I need a, I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on January 5th minutes? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And against? Unanimous.
A foreign meeting, and Bruno and Nora Robber there. Hi, is there any entertainment?
Did you guys get anything done? Solly must not have been here either. So nice when he doesn't show up.
What is this SCP 2015, Rick?
Yeah, that was a typo.
Typo?
It's January 5th.
All right, Chris, well, I do have something to read here.
Well, that comes under your, under your report.
What do we have to?
We have the two year extension next.
That's what I was asking you about. I don't see any paperwork on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I was delivering to you right there. I thought you were talking about the other.
I love Rick. Slipping.
All right, so I, we have a request for a two year extension.
You guys again?
I'm tired, Chris.
You have nothing else to do today?
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Working on overtime or something? Time and a half today? What's going on? What's going on?
Good evening, commission members. So, uh, we happen to have Chris Palowski, civil engineers, public engineering office is located at five oh one Main Street here in Monroe. Um, so this is, was approved back in two thousand fifteen. This is the cul-de-sac for sixty-four Cambridge Drive. Um, it has nothing to do with the previous permit and everything there. Uh, this is an infrastructure thing. Uh, we received an extension from Wetlands and we're here before you do the same. We've started the work on the project and, uh, we've had serious trouble sourcing the water pipes and other construction materials. Uh, so as soon as the spring kicks back off, we're going to have full steam ahead. But at the time, um, our permit does run out in March, so we are seeking a two-year extension. I don't know if we'll need two, two years, but we do need an extension to get this work done and we are in the middle there right now. Essentially consists of, if you've been out the Cambridge Drive, Cambridge Drive, there's axle plastics and it comes to, uh, squared off end of the road. We're putting a cul-de-sac there with a pension basin. Uh, again, it's approved back in two thousand fifteen. Has nothing to do with the previous years of, uh, the project, the exhibition film permit and all of that. It's completely separate, um, application. And again, we are making progress on it, but we are running out of time quickly here.
Okay. How many times we extended this?
Once.
So how, how, you're trying to get another two years?
That's just the extension we could probably make it do in a year.
Okay, Chair, I obtain a motion to grant the two-year extension.
This is Pete Metropolis and I have submitted a notification of intervention.
Rick, do we have a note of?
Oh, I.
Of intervention?
I'm, I'm not aware.
It's, it's been, it's been sent and I tried to look up this app, you, you, it's been sent, I was CC'd on it. I went to staff today. Uh, I tried to look up this application and there's no documentation online, so I would like you to, uh, give me an opportunity and push this off two weeks so that I can, uh, fully investigate this. As if you, years ago, I, I understand this is a two thousand fifteen, uh, application, but years ago, back when the John Kimball days originally, uh, there was, the driveway that we're talking about in the road included a bridge. And that bridge accidentally, the bond for that bridge was accidentally refunded.
It's a separate.
Built, so I would like an opportunity.
It's not the same, it's not the same thing. It's not the same thing.
Mr. Metropolis, you're, you're, you're speaking in the wrong street.
What?
This is, uh, Cambridge Drive. I believe you're referring to Enterprise, I want to say.
No, I'm talking about sixty-four Cambridge Drive.
But you're talking about the cul-de-sac that's going to be connected to Timothy Drive.
No, I'm not. I'm talking about the entrance of the quarry there. There was a wetland that was filled in back before your guys' time. There was never a bridge built and the wetlands were filled in. It was over two thousand square feet, which requires approval from Army Corps Engineers. And I just would like to have a little opportunity to, uh, research this before we grant the two-year extension. That's all. Really not up to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Don't have intervener status at this point, therefore, as a member of the public, we generally do not, uh, grant members of the public more time.
But you, you've been.
We did not do that the last time that was requested, so.
I'm just letting you know, I'd like the opportunity. If you deny it, it might end up in appeals court again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the extension of two years for sixty-four Cambridge Drive, uh, re-subdivision plan, uh, sub twenty fifteen zero two file one.
In a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the rolls, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Rosie, no.
Riley, yes.
Ainie, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay. The, uh, eyes have it, four to one. The extension is granted. Correspondence? I don't think we have any correspondence.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner reports, I do have a report. Yeah? I have a letter. Remarks, well, this is a clarification of the town planner's remarks at the July seventh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, and it's on a commission meeting regarding the review of the eight twenty-four referral on the partial discontinuance of Spring Hill. At the time, town plan, the town planner stated Spring Hill Road never got connected to Monroe Turnpike, Route one eleven, or never was connected. What he meant to say was that Spring Hill Road never got reconnected to Monroe Turnpike, uh, as it was at one point connected. Uh, Route one eleven after, Monroe Turnpike, Route one eleven, after DOT construction, constructed this portion of Monroe Turnpike, Spring Hill Road and Purdyville Road, Spring Hill Road was previously connected to Monroe Turnpike as it reconnected. Clarify. I hope that clarifies it.
Yeah, it was brought to my.
Total, makes sense.
I left out reconnected.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
All right, land you staff reports.
Yeah, okay. Can I just add to the commissioner's report?
You can.
I stopped in to the tax assessor's office yesterday, um, spoke with Justin Feldman in regards to, which I believe is ten Victoria Drive, uh, the Amazon parking facility.
Yes.
And he had indicated to me that we had not received any tax revenue or registrations of any vehicles, which was part of the conditional approval, if I remember correctly. So he was indicating to me that he was taking action, he was going over to inventory what's physically on the lot, but as of now, they're not following the conditions of the approval.
And that is correct and the town is, uh, pursuing the correct avenue.
This was our concern when we approved it, it was going to be hard to enforce this.
Who is the person to do that? Tax assessor, I would imagine?
Well, it's a combination of the, uh, tax assessor's office in conjunction with the first selectman and the town attorney.
Wasn't that part of?
That's our condition of.
Yes, right, so then we can give a cease and desist.
The, the appropriate action, as recommended by the town attorney, will be forthcoming to this commission.
Uh, and I have a question about the, um, reports on Enterprise Drive. We do a report on the filling of the quarry? Been a while, can we ask?
They are behind and they are, we are going to be having at the next meeting.
All right.
Leaning behind.
We sort of had the, the last, uh, report.
That guy was usually coming.
Not so far.
Well, they came, gave us a report. I'm not sure if that was, was. We planned on doing it six months after the last report, which I.
Yeah, that was extended. We have a new contract.
All right, so we should be getting another.
Need, the commission needs to be brought up to speed.
All right, I'd like to see a report on that.
They have been contacted and they, uh, are preparing the report as we speak.
Great. Oh, you spoke to him?
Yeah.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
Oh, it's important component, this commission.
Oh, absolutely, no, it's.
Things have been going smoothly and let's continue.
Let's keep it that way, absolutely.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, except that the next zoning regulations, uh, meeting, I'm recommending, because we have a lot to discuss, as the members that were there. On, uh, February twenty-seventh, it can't be on the twentieth, that's a federal holiday. So look at your calendar and see if that's.
Twenty-seven?
Yeah, we have a lot on our plate.
Looks okay with me, that's a Monday, last Monday in February.
Let's do it. I don't know. Yeah. Cool, put it in your calendar, text.
Secretary, yeah.
She reminds me that I still don't show up.
You missed pizza too.
I was deadly sick. That one was actually, I, I couldn't.
Get pizza though.
Do we have anything else?
Next time.